Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, August 17th, 2020. Call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. A recognition of members present. I'll let the record reflect that all councilors are present, including the city administrator. With that, I'll ask everyone to join us in the pledge of allegiance. The flag is behind the city administrator Kane Rath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. In that, we are now moving on to item four of the agenda. We, under general, we have item A, reviewing, review council schedule. Council in consultation with the city administrator. We have decided if it's okay that we will go ahead with a meeting on the 14th of September, 21st of September, and 28th of September, all Mondays. And that will make it so that we will not be having a meeting surrounding the holiday weekend. So therefore, folks can go away and enjoy their holiday with their family and social distancing with others if they, if they choose to. But that, that is the proposed schedule. At this moment in time, we are unsure of whether those will be live. We will be back in council chambers, or if we will be continuing to Zoom. We will know more once there's an update from Governor Mills around her September 3rd extension. So with that, that is the proposed council schedule for moving forward into September. If the, one thing I would like to get a sense of from the council is if the, if it's allowed, does the council want to come back to City Hall chambers in the month of September? If it can be done safely?
Yes.
Yeah, if it's safe.
I vote no.
I'm in favor of if we can do it safely.
I'll defer to your judgment, Mayor, on that one.
Totally. Either way, it's fine with me.
Thank you all. So we will have an update somewhere around the 3rd, but the, the dates for the next council meeting are the 14th, 21st, and 28th of September. With that, we are moving on to item five, which is committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee correspondents to report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Minton.
We had our shuttle bus transit meeting last week. Everything's been going quite well. Scheduled deliveries are all moving forward. Transit's looking forward to renewing the lease at the train station with tonight's document. All in all, everything's been good. Ridership's been creeping up slowly and getting back to normal levels occasionally at peak times. Wish more people were using the trolleys over at the beach, but again, it's coming up slowly. So I'm, I'm sure a lot of that's due to the fact that maybe there aren't as many people at the beach. So we're only seeing that maybe the same riderships, just fewer people are there this year. Anyway, that's about it from the shuttle bus.
Thank you, Councilor Minton. Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm reading a letter on behalf of HPC Chair Kelly Archer. She's been having a little difficult, technical difficulties getting on the Zoom, so I just wanted to make sure I put this in the record. On behalf of H, the HPC, our Rondeau Point Burying Ground project, a ground penetrating radar and survey, surveying was performed last week and was a success. The HPC wants to thank Rob Perry, aka The Bone Finder, Technographics, Mike Colla B, and a screw of Down Colla B Surveying, Ryan Summer and his crew of Saco Parks and Recreation, Andrew Dickinson, Saco Communications Coordinator, for his archiving of interviews and live footage, and the abutting landowner Mitch Sandboard for all their efforts in making this worthwhile project a success. The HPC continues to gather all the necessary information for its recent Maine Historic Preservation Commission grant approval in this Howl of Grounds nominating process to the National Register of Historic Places, not only in the boundaries of the cemetery and its 570 right of way, its significance in the finding of over 200-plus souls buried there, and to the completion of many of their biographies. We are very grateful to have in attendance Cody McManus and Jason Southwick, two Eagle Scouts whose projects in the 1990s were in the clearing of the burying ground and the right of way, respectively. Steve Bentley and his 2009 Friends of Rondeau Point and their countless efforts, hours, and dedication to this invaluable project, to the 12th generation descendants of the Patterson and Edgcombe families sharing stories, and to, of course, councilors Marshall Archer, Lynn Coaklin, and Jody McPhail for participating in this historic event. Thank you all. The HPC will continue to update the council as much is still to be done. And we thank those of you for your support of the city of Saco's first, in discovery, the Saco's first colonial burying ground of our first European ancestors. Thank you. That is Kelly Archer, HPC Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Gunn. And please pass our thanks on to Chair Kelly Archer as well. Thank you.
I'd like to associate myself with her words as well.
Councilor Copeland.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Saco Shoreline Commission had a meeting and they discussed and voted to send this to the council. So I'll, I'll read this to you. These are their PPA comment, well, the comments on the PPA from the Shoreline Commission. So included below are comments provided by the Shoreline Commission on the PPA models provided by the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Concern remains about the beach damage beyond the Corps of Engineers' defined project area. Consolidated comments from the Shoreline Commission on the Army Corps of Engineers' PPA model. Initial comment, the US Army Corps of Engineers still attempt to limit reconstruction to the currently defined project limits of 3,000 feet north of jetty, of 3,000 feet north of it. However, damages to, damages extended to Goose Fair Brook, 1 to 12 and 1/3 mile north of the jetty. Nor does the Army Corps of Engineers acknowledge the damage to the Rachel Carson Refuge and future closures of Goose Fair Brook due to sand replenishments multiple times. On Article 1, Section B, all design and construction costs, including initial beach nourishment, are not shared with the non-federal sponsor, the city. It is all borne by the Army Corps. The federal government should pay 100% of the cost for construction of the breakwater and related costs in accordance with Plan 6. The non-federal sponsor does not pick up any cost, including a full beach replenishment, provided we get the additional $5 million. Section G, in-kind contributions by the city could include expertise and procurement to lead to the reduction of an, of expenses paid by the Army Corps. Article 2, Section B, Army Corps absorbs 100% of cost, not the city at 35%. Section B 1, provide access and right-of-way public access to improved area. Section B 2, federal government to provide as-built drawings and documentation to non-federal sponsor within 30 days of project completion. Section B 3, no cost to share. Section B 4, no non-federal funds required. Section C, non-federal sponsor to review the comment during concept, design, development, and construction phases and otherwise involved in daily operations. Would want allowance for the city to find cost savings for the project, and if not taken by the Army Corps, as a government is in final control of contracts slash procurements, et cetera. An explanation of why a more expensive option was taken. State approvals need to be specific, and the responsibility of the Army Corps with local assistance, perhaps. The Army Corps cannot request any funds from the non-federal sponsor once the work is completed. Section E 2, Army Corps, in reference to existing jetty, shall provide city maintenance costs annually to the city. The non-federal sponsor must sign off on the work, and it, and if it takes ownership of the breakwaters, there will be no additional cost to that sponsor. Any repairs from storms or other acts of God are eligible for FEMA funds per procedure. A baseline should be established to determine the cause of any damage. Any money not spent is to be used by the non-federal sponsor for projects or studies related to the beach erosion in Saco Bay. Future beach replenishments are the responsibility of the non-federal sponsor, which has the right to request federal funds. Beach replenishments should not be the same financial obligation of the non-federal sponsor. Section E, no non-federal liability to operate, maintain, repair, rehabilitate, or replace a federal structure or authority and responsibility. Section E 1, delete. Specification, I guess, E 2, non-federal ownership responsibility. Sentence 1, delete that the non-federal sponsor now or hereafter owns or controls. Delete if the government determines, dot, 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 or ellipses, after notification by the government. Delete no operation, maintenance ellipses faithfully performed on this agreement, of this agreement. Section F and G, city should verify if main geological can perform. Section, Section I is local state floodplain management plan in place. Section K, make sure language allows for improvements to erosion mitigation and not to be deemed obstructions. Section O, a team can be formed between the Army Corps and the city, but all language of shared cost should be eliminated. Section O, again, federal portion of project coordination team should be borne by the government. Article 3, needs defining of property relocating, not sure if it's applicable. Article 4, hazardous substances beyond city time referencing all costs to investigate should be borne by the Army Corps. Article 4, any hazardous material investigations, resolution attributable to the government is the government's responsibility for restitution, cleanup, or removal at the federal cost. Article 5, credit for real property interest, if applicable, all cost language reverts to Army Corps. Not a share credit to 0% cost share of the city.
Councilor Copeland, how much, how much, how many more edits are there? Because, and can, can you, has that been sent to the council?
Has not been sent to the council. It has been sent to you, the city administrator, and the, the city clerk. I can send it to them, but I really would like to read it in so that people listening can understand the things that we're trying to work with here. So, you know, and some of the issues are. This, this pretty much does it. I know it's not easy reading because it's just telling you what the edits are for that without having the whole paragraph, but I do think it gives the flavor of some of the things that we still need to work on, and I think our constituents should hear it.
I, I don't necessarily disagree, Councilor. I'm just.
I'm about, oh, I don't know. It's hard because the spacing is weird, but it's about.
Those are not actual PPAs that Saco are going to consider. Those are PPAs that of, of different projects.
Right. That's understood. So these are the things that we want to call out specifically so that when they do draft the one for us, these things are taken into consideration. It's understood that the ones that were provided were samples and that our situation is unique. I'll try and go fast. Where was I? Delete. I won't go over the delete, delete, delete ones. How about that? In Article 8, the federal structure, it's a federal responsibility. And Option 3 is non-federal sponsor should be state of Maine. Option 6, no additional project work planned. Option 7, federal, section 111 project. And the comments on the Maticuck New York PPA, it's a federal project, non-federal sponsor required. Page 2B, the project is federal. Maintain, repair, rehabilitate, operations or replacement is federal responsibility. Design plans require local review prior to development and construction. Plan modifications, changes need local review at concept stage to include change orders. Lands easements, rights of way shall not include municipal state roadways. Page 5E, no local responsibility to maintain, repair, rehabilitate, or replace the project or any portion thereof. Page 5F, not accessible to city, main geological, United States Corps of Engineers, possibly. Article 6A, no repair, replace, rehabilitate, operate of city, non-federal sponsor. Article 10, paragraph C, federal government responsible for a cleanup or response cost from federal action. And I'm very close to the end. Article 11A and A1, federal government responsible for monitoring, assessment, cleanup inspection of any hazardous waste conditions on project. And then there's more about possibility of late liability for non-federal sponsor. Can we get your advice on that? Thank you. Afford it to the whole council, afford it to the whole council right now.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Any further committee correspondence from council, or for councilor? Seeing no further committee correspondence, moving on to item 6, public comments. City Administrator Ken Rath, have we received any public comment for tonight's session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a few pieces of public comment. I'll read into the record now. If that's okay.
Thank you.
All right. The first piece comes from Nancy Phillips to Chantel Way, Saco, Maine. I have been a resident of Saco for 16 years and also a dog owner. My yard is fenced for my dog, but I often walk around the Sierra Woods Development and surrounding area. I and my neighbors and their children frequently walk the sidewalks in front of Saco Middle School. I am concerned about a recent incident where two unleashed dogs attacked a woman and her leashed pet. This was a serious and unprovoked attack, and the owner and her dog were seriously injured. I was under the impression that Saco had a leash law in place in public areas. As a lifelong dog owner, I must protest the term "under voice command" as a false promise that an animal will not react aggressively despite an owner's command. All dogs should be leashed when out in public spaces with no exceptions. It should also be noted that students are often playing and walking the front fields of the Saco Middle School. What happens when unleashed animals decide to take part in the activity and become aggressive? The school path is also a place where a child may be attacked with no one around to intervene. I personally notified the school personnel on two occasions when a bear was in this area so they could notify the resource officer to be aware of this. Please enact or revise the animal control policies to require dogs to be leashed all times in the city of Saco. This is an important issue. Loose dogs who attack people and pets should be quarantined by the city and should be subject to removal from the city when the situation calls for it. I'm willing to answer any questions you may have. Thank you in advance for your assistance in this matter, Nancy Phillips. The second piece of public comment I have, not from a Saco resident, but from Superintendent of Schools Dominic De Passi, to whom I concern, I was recently informed of an incident on the morning of June 5th, 2020. It was reported that two dogs rushed toward a young lady with a baby, as well as another woman who was walking her dog. The young woman ran to Saco Middle School and pounded on the front door for help. She was visibly crying, according to the staff. The other woman and her dog were reported to have been bitten and attacked by two dogs as blood was visible, and both the woman and her dog were on the ground when my staff arrived on the scene to help. My staff were traumatized by the event and what they had witnessed. They were very concerned with the safety of our students, parents, and community members who will be on campus when school reopens, as well as during the summer when staff are present doing professional development or cleaning. I am extremely concerned that these two dogs live across the street from one of our public schools and believe that measures need to be taken to make sure our community is safe. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Dominic De Passi. Final piece of correspondence I have is from Barbara La Brick. Five, Chantel Way, to whom I concern, I write to add my concern about an incident that occurred on June 5th, 2020, in my extended neighborhood, specifically the dog attack at the Saco Middle School, during which my neighbor Cynthia Chandler Granger, along with her dog Bella, was pursued and bitten by two German Shepherds. She ended up in the emergency room and her dog at the emergency vet clinic. I've lived in the Sierra Woods neighborhood for over 15 years, the majority of us dog owners. The dogs are not required, are not permitted to be loose. Some of us have invisible fencing, others tie their dogs outside. Most of us regularly walk the neighborhood with our dogs and often do a loop around the Saco Middle School with our dogs on leech. I no longer feel safe to do that, and I haven't walked that loop since June 5th. While I am sure that this was not intentional, if it happened once, it will happen again. The next person may not be so lucky. Added to this fact, added to this is the fact that the pathway is the route that all the neighborhood children travel twice daily to walk to and from the Saco Middle School. When school reopens, we'll be safe for them. I doubt it. Thank you for your attention to this matter, Barbara La Brick. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Ken Rath. With that, we'll open up the public comment session. For anyone that would like to speak before the council, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine, and you'll be unmuted and have three minutes to present your comments to the city council. Again, for those in attendance and wishing to speak during the public comment section of the agenda, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine, and you'll be unmuted to deliver your comments. Seeing, seeing no hands raised and nobody seeking recognition, moving on to item seven, approval of the minutes. Item A, approval of minutes from August 3rd, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve the minutes made by Councilor Minton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy. Any discussion? Councilor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did make a request at a previous meeting that while it was great that we have the quasi-transcript from the Zoom meeting, but it, it's kind of weird how it goes. There's like spaces all over the place that I had asked if it could be reformatted, Mr. Kane Rath. Has there been any discussion on that?
I can check back in with City Clerk Michelle Hughes and Communications also to see if we can get that, that sorted out.
I sure would like it. Thank you so much. I'll be voting no until I
I'll be voting no until I get that.
Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, yes, several months ago, I guess it was now, I had asked, we have like a workshop or something on the agenda to discuss uh, meeting minutes. So I'm just reminding people as we go forward that I'm still hoping that will be provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call vote on the minutes. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
No, for the reasons stated.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes five, two. Uh, we are now at uh agenda, item eight, consent items. Uh, the first up is uh item A, the Bitterford Stock Gold Orchard Beach Transit Lease Approval. Uh, and then also item B, application for solid waste permit. Triano Waste Services, Inc. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Excuse me, the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made by councillor Mintorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor McPhail. Uh, any discussion? Councillor Copeland and then councillor Johnston and councillor Copeland.
I'd like to pull the um, the transit lease from the um consent agenda, please. I, I move to pull it from the lease.
Second.
Spent a motion made by councillor Copeland uh to remove item A from the consent agenda, which would then make it uh item F under action items. And this has been seconded by councillor Johnston. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Mintorn?
Looking at the edits I received from councillor Copeland, most of those edits were basically what I would call Scrivener's Corrections. Um, and that was it. So I don't know that it really warrants getting moved down to action because of a few grammatical changes. Uh, the, the motion, the way it reads would certainly uh allow for a few edits being made in the final document under that context.
Thank you, councillor Mintorn. Councillor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yes, while I do agree with councillor Mintorn, we don't typically debate items to be pulled off this section. They just happen. Um, and I just wanted to keep it going that way because it's been very um freshing, uh, refreshment that you can just say, hey, I'd like to withdraw it. So I do what? I actually agree with councillor Mintorn in this part, but I like the process in which we don't debate. It just happens.
And councillor Copeland?
I just wanted to say that um, yes, I understand uh councillor Mintorn and many of them are Scriveners, but there are a couple of points that I, I think are more than that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing on roll call vote, councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
No.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six, one to remove item A. So now we have item B on the consent agenda and that is the application for solid waste permit. Triano Waste Services, uh, is there a motion or the motion has been approved? Excuse me, it's been motioned and seconded by councillor Mintorn and councillor McPhail. Uh, any further discussion on item B only? Councillor Copeland, your hand is up. Is that from before? Seeing no more discussion on item B, a call for a roll call vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero to approve item B. We are now up to agenda item nine, which is action items. With the removal of consent agenda item A and, and transition it to action items, that will be item F for discussion. F for discussion. So at this point, we're at uh item A, public hearing, renewal application for special entertainment permit, Townhouse Pub, councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Townhouse Management, Inc., doing business as Townhouse Pub, has applied for a renewal of their special entertainment permit. The permit would be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees and the clerk has properly advertised public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter ninety-three, Entertainment, Section ninety-three dash two, move to open a public hearing.
Motion's been made to open the public hearing by councillor Johnston, second by councillor Mintorn. Any discussion? Roll call vote, councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to pass, the motion passes seven, zero to open the public hearing at seven oh one PM. At this time, the public hearing is now open. If there is anyone who would like to speak on item A, the renewal application for a special entertainment permit for Townhouse Pub, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, for those wishing to provide comment on this public hearing, it's now open, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine and you'll be unmuted to provide comments to the council. Seeing no hands raised and nobody seeking recognition, councillor Johnston?
Move to close the public hearing, be it ordered, city council grant renewal application submitted by Townhouse Management, Inc., doing business as the Townhouse Pub for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license and move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by councillor Johnston, second by councillor Mintorn. Uh, any discussion? Uh, seeing no discussion. Councillor, a roll call vote, councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing and grant the permit passes seven, zero at seven oh three PM. Councilors, just please make sure to uh go in and sign these permits, uh, the application for the solid waste permit and then the renewal application at city hall when you get a chance. With that, we are up to item B, first reading, proposed I two zoning amendment for large commercial vehicle sales and service. Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. Sale of three fifty-one North Street, existing Public Works Building. Uh, on March thirtieth, twenty twenty, as a result of competitive RFP process, city council voted six, one to accept the development proposal for three fifty-one North Street. For the understanding that this proposal will require a zoning amendment for the use within the I two district. The selected development proposal utilizes the existing Public Works Building for large commercial vehicle sales and service for the sale, service, repair and maintenance, primarily for emergency service vehicles. Um, the proposed use requires a zoning amendment to accommodate the accepted proposal and after much research and consideration of the fact that the city has been working to consolidate uses with the zoning ordinance revision to the separate process, staff proposed adding automobile dealer use with foreign standards to this district. It's important to note that the remaining three respondents to the RFP would have required some form of zoning amendment as well. Staff introduced this proposal to the planning board in workshop on June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and then followed up with a formal proposal on July seventh, twenty twenty. The city council then referred this amendment to the planning board per zoning ordinance, section two thirty dash fourteen oh one on July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Planning board held its public hearing about this amendment on July twenty first, twenty twenty, noting new noting new concerns about the proposed performance standards and the possibility of loopholes. Staff took the planning board's feedback after the public hearing and worked with city attorney Tim Murphy to consider several options, including adding a new use for to further modify the performance standards for automobile dealer or modify the definition of light industry. Adding a new use to the ordinance rather than trying to add performance standards or otherwise modify an existing use helps ensure that the use is transparent will only be allowed within the I two district and was consistent with the direction staff received from the planning board. Following new permitted use definition or the following new permitted use definition to the I two zoning district was presented for consideration to the planning board for its August fourth, twenty twenty meeting. Large commercial vehicle sales and services, an establishment primarily for the sale of new and used specialized vehicles and or construction equipment, all larger than ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight rating, including but not limited to mobile cranes, earth moving equipment, fire and rescue apparatus, drivable RVs and semi-tracked and trailer trucks. This use includes repair, manufacturing, fabrication and assembly, does not include the processing or storage of raw materials or salvaging operations. Uh, the, the planning board outcome, on August fourth, twenty twenty, the planning board deliberated on the proposed zoning amendment and moved and seconded to accept the use large commercial vehicle sales and services as conditional use in the I two zone for the following definition, a change from the staff proposed definition. An establishment primarily for the sale of new and used specialized vehicles, all larger than ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight rating, including but not limited to fire and rescue apparatus, drivable RVs and semi-tracked and trailer trucks. This use includes repair, manufacturing, fabrication and assembly, but does not include the processing or storage of raw materials or salvaging operations. After continued deliberation, the motion failed with a three, three vote. The planning board will be asked to vote at its next meeting scheduled for August eighteenth, twenty twenty on a report on this zoning amendment to the city council. It is anticipated that the report will be provided prior to the city council's next meeting scheduled for September fourteenth, twenty twenty. City council's first reading and scheduled a public hearing. The city staff is recommending that the new permitted use definition to the I two zoning district as proposed by staff and attorney Tim Murphy incent the planning board on August fourth, twenty twenty be approved by the city council for its first reading at the city council meeting scheduled for August seventeenth, twenty twenty, that the city council set the public hearing for September fourteenth, twenty twenty. In anticipation of planning board's vote on the report at its August eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting, staff recommends approving the first reading of this amendment and scheduling a public hearing on September fourteenth, twenty twenty. Um, I move to approve the first reading and schedule a public hearing on September fourteenth, twenty twenty regarding the following order in substantially the same form as presented, be it ordered that the city council accept the new permitted use in the I two zoning district of large commercial vehicle sales and service and establishment primarily for the sale of new and used specialized vehicles and or construction equipment, all larger than ten thousand pounds gross vehicle weight rating, including but not limited to mobile cranes, earth moving equipment, fire and rescue apparatus, drivable RVs and semi-tracked and trailer trucks. This use includes repair, manufacturing, fabrication and assembly, does not include the processing or storage of raw materials or salvaging operations. Uh, move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by councillor Johnston, second by councillor Mintorn. Uh, any discussion? Councillor Archer?
Uh, yes, councillor Johnston, can you reread that? I missed a spot somewhere in the middle. Aren't we funny?
Any further discussion? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. So, I mean, when I, when I first received this, I really had considered not reading this into the record. Um, I, I spoke with the director or Director Quavette today. I think we had a pretty good conversation. Um, and, and while I understand that this process that we're following doesn't negate the ability for the planning board to make additional changes as part of its report at tomorrow's meeting. Uh, I personally, along with several other planning board members, feel that this process is kind of flawed. Um, the planning board has spent, along with city staff, has spent significant amount of time trying to come up with um language that it felt was appropriate for that particular location in Saco. Um, and, and I personally feel that they should have been allowed to finalize what that language was before this was sent to council. Uh, in many ways, it it is or could be perceived as disingenuous to the role of the planning board. Um, and this isn't a criticism of, of the planning department. Like I said, I, I spoke with, with Denise. Um, it's kind of out of, out of their purview in, in my mind because they don't set schedules or agendas. So if timing had been an issue, nothing prevented us. In fact, I would actually have encouraged a special joint meeting for planning and council to discuss this matter because it has become a, a hot topic item. Um, I understand we're, we, we have scheduling conflicts as far as when our next meeting is, but I, I just don't understand why we couldn't have scheduled a specific meeting just for this item. So, I mean, with that said, that, that's all, all I really have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Uh, any further discussion on this? Councillor Archer?
Uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll be voting to push this forward and I do, I do hear what councillor Johnston is saying. Um, but what, what great thing about this three process meeting is that if the planning board, which is independent of us, makes their own decision and change the words, the wording of the proposed motion and a councillor decides that that's the route they want to take, it can always be amended at a later date. So we can still follow the process now and I do understand that this is, let's just go with outside the normal. Um, I still believe it's legal, but outside normal. Um, again, that there, anything that the planning board does push forward in the future can still be addressed by this council and change it into this motion before we do the final vote. So I'm still going to push it forward, but again, I do recognize that this is outside the norm. Um, but I still see the process being followed just uh, it's just like a little backwards by about a day, twenty-four hours where we're operating first before they do. But we can still take that, their decisions into consideration by the final vote.
Thank you, councillor Arch. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Uh, roll call vote, councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Copeland?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, zero. Moving on to item C, final reading of chapter eighty-one review to Marguerite Road, councillor Purdy.
Earlier this year, the city council initiated its review of land donation to Habitat for Humanity. Since then, the Leadburgs, abutting property owners at three forty-three Flag Plumb Road have approached the city asking to purchase some of the city's land that abuts their property. Staff reached out to Habitat representatives to ask that Habitat share a copy of the survey they were undertaking of the site. Staff received a copy of the survey which shows several structures owned by the Leadburgs encroaching onto the city's property. At this time and after reviewing several options, a positive solution seems to be to sell some of the city's land to the Leadburgs, retain at least thirty thousand square feet of land for the city and donate the remaining land to Habitat for Humanity. I move to approve the final reading for the following order in substantially the same form as presented. Be it ordered that the city administrator is hereby authorized to execute sale approximately ten thousand square feet of land for assessed land valuation with buyer covering all associated fees and to execute all necessary documents to donate specified portion of land of to Marguerite Road to Habitat for Humanity.
Motion's been made by councillor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by councillor Gunn. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston, then Councilor Copeland. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. I feel like there's a lot still left unanswered here. I have a question, which I hadn't asked previously, but I'm curious. Do we know how much the city foreclosed on this property for back in 1981? And then, of course, I had sent an email early this morning asking about how we determined the valuation on this, and I hadn't received that information yet, so I'm curious if that was provided today. And then another question, which actually was brought up by the abutter, and he spoke of well issues in the area, and I was curious if that has been looked into or addressed. Not so much specifically for this, but my concern is that under the new proposed zoning ordinance, we're reducing lot sizes out there, and if he's having issues or his neighbors having issues with well, then perhaps maybe that's not the direction we should go in. So I'm just curious if anybody followed up to his question in his letter that he had provided to us. So if those could be, those questions could be answered first, I'd probably have follow-up.
City Administrator Canrath, do you have any answers to those questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on the original value, I don't know that. We could probably obtain that, but it was back in 1981, so we'd have to go back. I am waiting for a response from City Assessor Niktos Jardins on your other question. I did get that this morning and forward that on. So I have not yet received a response there, but we will need his input as far as the details on how exactly the assessed value was determined on that, on that cutaway. So as soon as I have that, I can certainly forward it on. And the well issues, I don't have any expertise on, you know, maybe, well, now, former city planner and local Prescott might have some background there we could follow up with, unless someone else on the meeting right now has anything further to chime into it there.
Councilor Johnston, it seems that there's not many answers to your questions at this moment in time, but City Administrator Canrath will continue to seek the answers to your questions.
I'm interested to hear what other councilors have to say.
Councilor Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm on your county registry of deeds site trying to find out that foreclosure amount. But so my questions, I did formally, formally request to find out if there was title insurance. What do we know about that? I have heard nothing.
Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator Canrath.
Thank you. Through Mr. Leadberg and Mr. Leadberg's attorney, they indicated there is not title insurance.
Thank you. Councilor Copeland.
Well. All right, so here's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking, I want this to go to Habitat for Humanity. I want a family to have a place to live there. Should it be in the downtown area? Maybe another one another time. Right now, we have this opportunity before us, and I want to seize it. But at the same time, I think that we need to be fair across the board. Everybody needs to be following the same rules. So if someone just said, well, you know, I don't care where my property line is, I'll just like build stuff and whatever, that's just not possible for everybody to do. I mean, I think we can all agree on that. So I think the solution should be that he should move his stuff off the city property onto his own. So he was, there was a discussion of like 5,000 or whatever dollars that he was going to buy this land with. Why doesn't he use that money to put his buildings on his property? That being said, if there's something that's a permanent structure, like it looks like one of them might be larger, what about the other ones? And then just carve out exactly around there and give them an easement to get to that little piece, that shed or whatever. I just don't think that people should just, like, build stuff without permits wherever they feel like it. That's not the rules that we all have to live by. And there was a discussion that Counselor Johnston raised about the valuation. So we haven't got a response to that, and I don't know why. I think that that should have been pushed for. That was an important thing, I thought, and disappointed that it wasn't. So the thing is that we can't pick and choose the ordinances that we're going to apply or not apply. You know, we don't really know what the assessed value for that specific piece is. We don't know what the market value is, and this is all ridiculous, and we wouldn't know or care, you know, specifically if it didn't come up here. And there is an option, there is an option for us to close our eyes to this, go through with the sale to the donation to the Habitat for Humanity, because we do risk losing them moving forward with this. But I think, I think that, you know, with so many, we're so trying to get away from this kind of nonsense. We're trying to make it so that the rules apply to everyone equally. I mean, we can see from our contract zoning, we can see from a bunch of different decisions that, you know, we sit here and we pick which ones we like, which ones we don't like. I just don't think that somebody should be doing this. And I think it has come to our attention, and I think that we have to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Archer, then Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mayor. The, from, in the reading I was doing over the last, this has been going on for months now. My understanding is that the Leadbergs have been paying taxes on that shed, even though it wasn't on the property legally. I don't think there was any, well, and also that shed's been there since, I believe, if I remember correctly, before they even bought the property. There was no, I don't think there was any ill intent here. Nobody's trying to skate through without paying taxes. They've paid their taxes for the last, you know, however long they've been there. I can't remember exactly. I think, my personal opinion is we should just move forward with this. This property's been essentially vacant for 40 years and generating no income for the city. I think that, I think we should just move forward at this point. And I said, there were mistakes made in the past, absolutely. It could take us another year to dig through, to dig to the bottom of this, and I don't think we'd be doing anybody any good by putting this off much, much longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Counselor Archer.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will be voting yes to push this forward, and a lot of it's based on what, I mean, not based on what Counselor Purdy just said, but I also am in agreement. And when this first came up, I did have those concerns about lost tax revenue over the time and all of that. And after thinking about this, and making the recommendation that we put in the assessed value, I'm feeling more comfortable with just selling it and moving on at this point. Again, it's not handing this to anybody. We're actually saying, hey, you've moved your property, you've moved your shed here. In order to keep it, you have to pay for it. So I guess that is us saying, holding them to the ground, like saying, hey, there have been mistakes on both parts. It's hard to assess something that's not on your property, so if this shed was assessed, I'm just basing this off of Counselor Purdy, what he just presented. I don't know for a fact it was. And again, we're saying assessed, so the reason why I liked having the assessed value in here is that it can be, whatever the sale is, I didn't like that there was no bottom line, I didn't say what the number would be, but now it says assessed. So that means when the assessment happens, that's going to be the cost, and that is something that can be verified by an outsider, not related to the city, it's an assessed value. So if someone had a problem with what the property sold for, they could hire their own independent assessor and find out if that information is the same. So what I'm seeing is that, hey, we're protecting the city's interests, we're protecting our other citizens, and we're financially making sure that this property gets paid for and we can move on. And again, now with Habitat for Humanity, when that's ready, we'll have some properties that pay taxes. So I, in the end, it's not the best option, but it is an option, and it's an option I can move forward with.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Councilor Menthorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, if we pulled the property card off Vision appraisal off our own onsite city form for Two Marguerite Road, it's currently just been increased $2,000 to like 33,900 is the assessed value for the Two Marguerite Road parcel. Assuming this carve-off is maybe a third of an acre, and the total parcel is 2.3 acres, it's about 1/7. If you take the 33,000 divided by seven, you come out about $4,800. So the $5,000 is a fairly realistic number to the current assessment that's listed in our system. Using that same system, if you go over to 343 Flag Pond Road, to Mr. Leadberg's property, he has been assessed for that shed for a $900 value. Now, I don't know when, we don't see when it was entered into the system, but the shed is listed on his property card. So in, you know, both cases, supporting what Counselor Purdy said, as well as Counselor Archer, I think we've got enough information here to move forward. Is it perfect? By all means, it's not. And I'm sure there are many other places in the city where we could find similar things that have been going on for years, and that's one of the things we all acknowledge and know that we need to get to the bottom of a lot of those. But, I mean, you know, last year, we gave a deed to the UU Church that they didn't have on their parcel since 1842. So, you know, there's a few things out there. We know that. But I'd like to go ahead and let's everybody move forward with this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. So again, if you had read my email this, earlier this morning, that's what I was trying to get at, was the 33,900 seemed largely under assessed in comparison to how land is being assessed to the surrounding butters. And my concern is that we had a true value on this land. I'm not, maybe that is the number, but I haven't seen anything that makes me feel comfortable with that valuation. I mean, I spoke with several people in that neighborhood or in other areas of Saco that have had similar instances where, you know, they're left feeling that, you know, they were forced to pay perhaps more than they should have, or closer to the current assessed value of the actual land. I think we all want the same thing here. I don't think we would have gone down this path if we hadn't. I mean, where I'm conflicted is that we started this process gifting land, and somewhere in between, you know, obviously, we found out about this other abutter that has his property on the city's property, and now we're the middleman. And so I'm just curious, you know, as to Counselor Copeland's point earlier, we could just gift the land and let Habitat for Humanity and the abutter figure out what they want to do with the situation, because we've inserted ourselves, and now we're playing, you know, favorites in some eyes, which I tend to agree with, because now we're putting value on land, we're saying, pay us this to correct your issue when other butters are paying, what it would appear to me anyway, much more per, you know, acre out there, the land. And I tried to summarize that all in my emails to you all. So I guess for myself, I don't feel as though I have enough information today, and I had hoped that the assessor would have had that to us, and I could better understand how we came to that number, because ultimately, I just want it to be a fair number for everybody, and not just in that neighborhood, but throughout the city that ends up in similar situations. So, I mean, I feel I'm at a point where I just make a motion to table until we have that information from the assessor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Copeland.
Just two quick points. There's not just the one shed, there are three.
For the purpose of a motion, right?
Yeah, that was a motion to table.
Sorry, Counselor Copeland, it was just, it was a motion.
Okay, just real quick, then I'll throw in that it's not always just about tax.
Standby, Counselor Copeland. Counselor Johnston, you were making a motion to table?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to the motion to table?
I'll second.
Was that Counselor Archer that seconded? Motion to table by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Archer. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer.
No discussion, correct. Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Copeland?
No, for the reason that I don't want to lose Habitat for Humanity. It's important that we get this done for people.
Counselor Menthorn?
No.
And Counselor McPhail?
No.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
A motion fails 2 to 5. Back to the main motion. Counselor Copeland, you had some comments, and thank you for giving me some leeway to handle the motion prior to your comments. Counselor Copeland.
I'm all set. I just wanted to say that not everything we do is about getting more taxable income. I mean, yes, we want to lower our tax base, there's no doubt, but not at any cost. So that was really what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counsel, do you want to hear at all from the Leadbergs or the Leadbergs attorney who is present and has their hand up? If there's no objection, I will unmute them, however, this is council discussion and comment on the motion, not public comment. So if there's no objection, I'll do it. If there's an objection, we'll continue moving forward with discussion and roll call vote. Seeing no objection?
Oh, sorry. I mean, we've had the public hearing, and they spoke. I can't imagine them offering anything else that's germane to the conversation, but that's just my thought. I mean, to get bogged down in more discussion from the abutter, I don't, I don't know. I don't see the point to it.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Menthorn, Counselor Copeland, then Counselor Archer. Counselor Menthorn.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I seem to remember something probably several years back now, where when the new assessor came on board, we were, he was going out and doing reevaluations on some of the parcels out on the west side of town especially, and there was only an incremental amount that you could increase a parcel's value in any given cycle, and that a lot of these were far behind where they should have been on the percentages, and that he's been raising them, and this is one of those that has been raised, but I seem to recall that this was an issue that he had raised to us several years back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Copeland, then Counselor Archer. Counselor Copeland.
I'm all for listening to people. I think that we would do us a disservice if we didn't listen. Of course, I think that it shouldn't go on forever, so, Mr. Mayor, I would like to hear from them with a three-minute maximum each.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counselor Archer.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if they have material evidence to present, that's great, but I've already presented that I'll be supporting this, so, just again, if it falls within a reasonable amount of time.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Counselor Copeland, your hands up. Is that new, or? Okay. Well, thank you. Counselor Johnston, is that an objection to hearing from the? hearing from the, the butter? If so, we're gonna continue moving forward with discussion and roll call vote.
I, I wouldn't outright reject. I just, I mean, we have a process. We follow. We had a public hearing unless this is something that's totally new, I think, I think that, you know, as, as Counselor Archer pointed out, it seems as though there's support currently. So I mean, my, my biggest issue here was, was not having that report from the assessor. I mean, I have other items I'd like to continue to discuss. I guess this is what I'm really like to get to, but he can speak.
So seeing no objections from the council, at this time, I'm going to unmute BCCM in BCCM. And I just ask that, once you're unmuted, you identify your name and address for the city council and you have three minutes to present your, your comments. You are now allowed to talk. Go ahead and unmute. And again, please identify yourself and please keep to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just obviously very briefly here. With regard to the question about title insurance, I had Mr. Leadburg go back and try to figure out. I mean, he bought it like 20-something years ago, so he went through to try to find any paperwork he had. It looked very clear from that paperwork that there was no title insurance. And then we also went out even further to actually search for policies and databases that we have access to. So there wasn't any title insurance. I don't think would really probably apply in this case anyway.
Sir, can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm really sorry. Brad Moran, Sanford.
Thank you.
And the other thing I just want to point out, in terms of creating precedents or anything like that, what is clear, what we tried to put forward to you folks was the Leadburgs did not know about this situation. This type of thing does unfortunately happen every now and then. And I don't, I would argue that you're not creating a bad precedent here, because no one obviously want to end up in a situation like this. They're gonna take whatever steps they could to avoid encroachments, but from their perspective, they just didn't realize it when they bought the property, because there was the driveway where it was, the cement pad, the sheds that were pretty old vintage. So they totally acted in good faith throughout this whole process. And then lastly, you know, whether the discussion or whether it should just be punted to Habitat for Humanity, I would just point out that they were involved in the process with the city staff and with Mr. Leadburg in the discussions about putting forth this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran, for your comments. Counselors, it's now back to you. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I hope that I don't think any of us were, were trying to imply it was a malicious intent or anything. When it was first brought to us, I certainly had questions as far as whether this butter built stuff on it, but it seems clear that he had no understanding and it does happen. I have a butter to my property that has a porch that sits on our land. So with that aside, and, and obviously my failure to get the assessor's report, which I mean, really is not on the assessors, it's on me for being too busy to get that email out earlier. There are a couple of other things I would, I would like to address with the gifted lot for Habitat. And I guess I could just go ahead and either amend the motion or discuss these first. But I guess I'll amend the motion. I would move to amend that we strike assessed land value, instead insert $6,000. It's just an easier number, round it up. And well, I guess it's up to you, Mr. Mayor. Do you want me to deal with that as a single motion? To amend, or would you prefer I just do all my amendments as one amendment?
Why don't we take them individually if you have multiple amendments? First amendment is to delete assessed value and then put in $6,000.
Correct.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second for the motion? Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay. Well, then, I guess I mean, previously I had, had brought up the desire to see this sprinkled. I, I know that Habitat had, had sent in some communication that they were opposed to it, but they thought it'd be too cost prohibitive. I would like to point out that our new zoning ordinance will be requiring single-family homes to be sprinkled. So after discussion with the deputy chief, which is something he's a big advocate for, that's why I had brought this up previously. And so I would, I would still like to see that as a condition of this approval. And then the other thing that I had brought up a while ago, and it's in the planning board's report on Chapter 81 review, would be to require all future driveway access to come off of Marguerite Road. And that was discussed again at the planning board. And primarily, the reason for that is it's addressed in the comp plan. It's a desire to have less curb cuts off of the Flag Pond Road for safety reasons, which is again, why it's been in the comp plan for 10 years. So given that the planning board will not be reviewing this as a site plan application, and it would just be going to code or done through the planning office, I would like to see that addressed here, because they were pretty clear on, on that desire. And again, it's a safety issue. So I guess I would make a motion to amend that after, well, I guess we can discuss that first. If anybody, other counselors have any comments on it.
So Counselor Johnston, you're talking about making sure that the the lots that go there are sprinkled or have sprinklers inside, which fits with the the proposed zoning ordinance revision, but not the current
Correct.
zoning ordinance.
Correct.
And then, well, let's take up that issue first. Is City Administrator Kainrath, do you have any? I, I don't see Emily Cole Prescott in attendance. Oh, I spoke too soon. I, I do see Emily Cole Prescott. Can we have Emily promoted, please? Emily, thank you for joining us. Welcome.
Thank you.
So the, the issue has been brought up from Counselor Johnston about having sprinklers up in the, in the gifted portion for any residential structure that they, that Habitat for Humanity puts up there, and that was supported by the planning board. And this will not be taken up at site plan review, correct?
Um, thank you for letting me comment. The one lot itself, so if one single-family home is built on this land, it will not qualify for a review with the planning board. It would go directly to code enforcement for a building permit. If two lots were to be built in the future, it probably would qualify for subdivision review, because the second lot would be considered the third one. And that's what triggers it under state law. So if two homes are redeveloped, it would go to the planning board for review under subdivision. The sprinkler, residential sprinkler requirement, there is no requirement in ordinance right now for single-family homes. The planning board, as I recall, spoke about the access, the driveway access off of Flag Pond Road, and that was what they were supporting. I don't believe they had discussions that I recall of the sprinkler recommendation. I know that Dave Pendleton, Deputy Fire Chief, had an initial conversation with them at one of the planning board meetings early on, when the Chapter 81 review was first done for just the Habitat donation. Residential sprinklers, will the proposal right now for the zoning ordinance that you will see in front of you in the coming months is actually required, residential sprinklers required in subdivision builds, so not all single-family new homes. And the reason for that was to start somewhere and that way, potential developers would have alert of the potential cost of installing those systems. So it's not going to be across the board required to have residential sprinklers.
Thank you for that, for that update. Any questions for Emily from the council? Seeing no questions. Counselor Johnston, do you want to make a motion?
I would.
Make an amendment to your, to, to the suggested motion?
Yes. I move to amend that after following Habitat for Humanity, we set the conditions on the donation are the following. All, that all new single-family homes that are built will have residential sprinkler systems installed prior to issuance of an occupancy permit and future, and any future driveway access be off Marguerite Road. I further move that the proceeds from the sale of approximately 10,000 square feet of land be deposited as follows. $3,000 to be donated to Habitat for Humanity for use towards the cost of installing a residential sprinkler system, with the remaining to be deposited with Parks and Rec to be used for the upkeep of the Booth Bay Park playground.
Waiting for a second on that? I'll second that. It's reasonable to me.
Actually, I was just trying to write it down. I don't write as fast as Counselor Johnston speaks, so. I'm just trying to write that, but down, but I, I will take your, I will take your second. And so Counselor Johnston, just so I have this correctly, please the amendment is for Habitat for Humanity, Habitat for Humanity can't conditions, our new single-family homes will have sprinklers and driveway access off of Marguerite Road. And the sale of the 10,000 square foot section to the butters will be divided with 3,000 going to Habitat for Humanity and the remainder going to SPR, Saco Parks and Rec for the dealing with the playground that's up in that area. Do I have that correct?
Generally, yeah. I mean, it's not word for word, but that, that is the intent. Yes.
Thank you. That's what I can read from my shorthand while you were talking.
I, I can submit
Please submit the actual to City Administrator Kainrath. But just so everyone knows, that's what we are looking for. At this moment, I do see a hand up from Habitat for Humanity, Amy Nucci. Does the council want to hear from Amy on this matter?
Yes, we do.
I don't see any objections. And since we allowed some other folks to speak, I think that it's it's the right thing to have Amy promote or have Amy unmuted. Amy, you, you have now been unmuted, or excuse me, you've been allowed to speak, so please unmute and give us your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes to speak to council.
Thank you. This is Amy Nucci, 11 Paul Avenue. First, thank you, Counselor Johnston, for your thoughtful motion to make a donation toward supporting sprinkler systems in the residential homes. I appreciate the thought behind that. I would just like to request that having a driveway come off of Flag Pond be not included, or sorry, excluding driveways off of Flag Pond not be included in the motion. Our intent is to develop the first home off of Marguerite, and we understand that it's the planning board's wish that we don't have any more curb cuts on Flag Pond. And we would certainly do everything we can to, to follow their directions. However, I would just maybe ask that if we leave it out and we make the lot division to create a second home, we will have to go through the subdivision process and the location of the driveway would be reviewed in that process. I'm just concerned that if the property is transferred with restrictions right now, it might tie our hands in terms of our ability to be able to develop a second lot and certainly, ultimately, that's the planning board's decision that they'd prefer not to have a second lot, so that there's no curb cuts on Flag Pond. We would understand that, but I'm just concerned that this might tie our hands from the get-go, not even give us the opportunity to explore all of our options. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. We have Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Archer. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. I like the idea of taking the money and donating it towards the costs for Habitat's build. My question was, do we know what the dollar figure is for a sprinkler system? Does that, does that $3,000 cover?
Most residential sprinklers are in like the 10,000 to 15,000 range.
Not anymore than that. So, I mean-
Counselor-
I just want to tag them with a $10,000 item and, and only give them $3,000 towards it.
Yeah.
We have Counselor Archer, then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So obviously, nothing can happen simply in, in the world of government and, and processes. Initially, my, my guts telling me I don't like it, because we're effectively asking Mr. the Leadburgs to give us money for the property and then we're just handing it away immediately after. Again, it's a good cause for three grand. I mean, we're already giving Habitat for Humanity 50,000, I believe, was the price of the land. So I mean, I'm not against the opposite giving, but to say, hey, we need six grand and we're just handing six grand back out. I, I do have a slight problem with that, just initially. Again, this is the first we've heard of it, so I haven't had time to process, but it, it did initially not hit me correctly.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Well, I mean, I think everybody understands the intent here. I mean, I look at this as you know, an opportunity. We had a, a parcel of land that, you know, we don't have current value on, but I'd be willing to guess that it's probably at least worth $100,000 that we're, we're gifting. You know, we all support that. Obviously, we've run into this situation and ultimately, you know, for, for me to go along with it, I was thinking, hey, it, it's going to be the 6,000 or thereabouts that the city has assessed for. And I'm not overly comfortable with it, because I don't have a true value on it. Then it, at the end of the day, if the point was to give this land away and help a cause and at the, also at the end of the day, I believe in single, in residential sprinklers, this was a good opportunity to put that forth. And you then have the park that sits there, that I think the vast majority of people didn't know existed. And, you know, from my, my experience on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, that you know, funds could always be utilized, particularly for these, these parks. So that was my rationale behind the, you know, the, the disposition of the money. Otherwise, you know, I guess it would go to the general fund. I, I mean, I guess you get the conversation of then maybe you just give the land to Mr. Leadburg, too. I don't, I don't know. I mean, this is kind of why I've been conflicted with this. I mean, this is kind of why I've been conflicted with this from the beginning, or at least when it got to this point where we're now playing this broker in between. It was never my intent to have that situation. It was, you know, a year ago or so last fall when it came to us, it was, hey, let's do a Habitat for Humanity home. You know, at that time, I had said, hey, I personally would like to see it located downtown. But ultimately, the land that was selected puts it out, you know, into North Saco. And now we've got issues with it. But as far as the residential sprinkler costs, the whole reason we had these conversations were based off, you know, the, the presentation that the deputy chief had presented us. And it was my understanding during those presentations that these things have become much more affordable than they were previously. And the main reason is you're no longer using, you know, metal or copper and it's, it's pets and so on. A new family or new construction, it is, I mean, the estimates I've seen is from 50 cents to a dollar or $4 per square foot. I mean, it varies because obviously contractors set those prices. But my, again, it's not my area of expertise, but my understanding was, you know, for a moderate single-family home similar to what Habitat would build, you know, you're talking several thousand dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars. But again, I'm not an expert in that area. So, but that is the information I was provided with, which is why many of us at the planning board, you know, supported this. And I recognize and perhaps I misspoke earlier as far as saying it's going to be part of the ordinance. I fully understand it's part of the subdivision ordinance. But my conversation with Deputy Chief Pendleton was that specifically on this, since we are gifting this, it would be nice if we show our support for, for sprinklers and, and single-family homes. I mean, ultimately, you're going, you're, it's very likely you're going to have somebody at a disadvantage that's living here to begin with. That's the nature of what Habitat does. It could be a senior, it could be someone of lower income. So why wouldn't we protect them to the fullest extent? And so that's my thoughts behind all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, roll call, vote. Let me take that back. We have a motion, we have an amendment on the table that hasn't been voted on. Let's take up the amendment, then the main motion. The amendment made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Copeland, was to amend or to put in conditions for Habitat for Humanity for the new single-family homes and, I'm paraphrasing, will have sprinklers and driveways off of Marguerite Road and then the new single-family homes will have sprinklers inside.
Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my second. I did a quick internet search and found that in, in the fire safety, whatever, there's a, let me get it, I'm not just saying whatever. There's information out there on the internet and it's from, oh, there's not it. Okay, the NFPA organization that they're a fire organization, they say that the costs in 2013 were estimated anywhere from 6,000 to 21,000. So given that that was so long ago and the lowest was 6,000, that, that scares me that that's going to be too much of a burden on Habitat, even if we give them 3,000, even if we give them all 6,000. For that reason, I withdraw.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland.
Can I just add a correction? The numbers were wrong, sorry. I, I think it's based on how the chart is identifying it. If you look at the minimum, it's 1695 with a maximum of 21,000. It's actually not in ascending order in cost. I see your 6,026.
Oh, I see. Oh, yes, I think you're right. It goes from 1,600. Okay. Thank you, Counselor Archer.
Not a problem. I thought, I was just like, oh, I gotta, I gotta interject, sorry.
I, I appreciate that. We, we do need to act on facts, not fiction, so.
Counselor Copeland, do you still want to withdraw your second?
It's tough making a decision without real information. I, I will second. If it's that low, I will second it.
Okay, so on the, on the, on the amended motion, roll call, vote on the amendment. If there's no further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, could you just restate the motion?
The, the amendment is to put conditions for Habitat for Humanity that every new single-family home on that parcel will have sprinklers, residential sprinkler system and driveways for that parcel will come off of Marguerite Road, not Flag Pond Road, with the sale of the 10,000 square foot portion to the abutter. Out of the proceeds of that sale, 3,000 will be given to Habitat for Humanity and the remainder will go to SPR for maintaining the, the playground up in that area. That is the motion, that is the amendment to the main motion. And we have a hand up from Counselor McFail. Counselor McFail?
I, Counselor Johnston, I just want to make sure based on Amy's comments that we are still leaving in the driveway.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I mean, I, I would, I'd like to see that, but, you know, ultimately, I, I care. I think she has valid points as far as if they build a second home that would go to subdivision review and it would be within the purview of the planning board to make that determination. So I would be agreeable to striking that if it would, you know, encourage other counselors to support the first amendment.
So, are you amending your amendment?
Yes.
All right, so the, the amendment to the amendment, and the amendment is to withdraw the driveways off of Marguerite Road condition. And that's, I'm, I'm just doing shorthand here, so that is the, the intent. If there's a specific intent outside of that, please let me know, but that is the intent that I got. Okay, so that motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McFail. For discussion, Counselor Copeland on the amendment to the amendment?
Yes, my question is about the sprinkler for the second house. So if we're going to give them 3,000 for the first and we're going to take some for the park, I, I would be in favor of giving it all to the Habitat folks. Because if they're going to put another house up there, and I really hope they do, you know, and we're telling them they got to put sprinklers in, we should fund it.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it comes down to, I just don't feel, I just don't feel good. My stomach's shifting that we're taking money from the left and literally handing out to the right. I'd be more on board of just, let's just, let's just donate the land to the Leibergs and then they figure it out themselves or something else. But the proposal that we have, we're, and I don't want to say butchering it because we're not butchering it. We're adding discussion to it, but again, I, it, it's definitely not what the, the animal was when it first came out. And I'm starting not to like what I see. And again, we're taking money from the Leibergs. And again, we're giving it to an organization. I get that. I'm, I'm a social worker, so. That's what I like to, way it's happening. So I'm going to be voting this amendment down, unfortunately.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Copeland?
I'm good. I made my peace.
I saw your hand up. I didn't know if that was before or not, but.
I guess I'm spoiled that Andrew used to put them down for us.
Okay, so on the amendment to the amendment, and that is withdrawing the, the condition of driveways off Marguerite Road. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, vote on, on the amendment to the amendment. Counselor Archer?
For the amendment to the amendment to withdraw from the road, yes.
And Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McFail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The amendment to the amendment passes 6-1. So now that, the amendment as amended will read, will read the current motion plus Habitat for Humanity conditions, new single-family homes will have residential sprinkler systems. And of the proceeds from the sale of the portion to the abutting, to the abutter, from the sale of that, 3,000 will be donated to Habitat for Humanity with the remainder going to SPR for maintaining the, maintaining the the playground up there. So we are, we are back on the amendment to the main motion. Any just, any further discussion on that? So you're, you're voting on basically requiring any, any single-family homes there to have sprinkler systems, residential sprinkler systems, and the proceeds from the sale of the property to the abutters that will be divvied up and handed out between Habitat for Humanity and Saco Parks and Recreation? That is the amendment that you're voting on. Any further discussion, Counselor Copeland?
Well, I, I don't want it just to go into the Saco Parks and Rec's general fund. I mean, if it's not going to be earmarked for this specific Booth Bay Park, then I wouldn't be for it. But again, I would be happy if somebody would agree with me that we should give all of it to Habitat for the Fire Sprinklers. That would help me with the, the issue that I have that these people are just having their stuff on other people's property and aren't moving them. So that helps me that we're helping others. So that's my point.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. I, I did read out that the money is for that, that playground up there as that was the condition that Counselor Johnston spoke of in his amendment. Counselor Johnston, am I correct that I have your amendment intent intact?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, you've expressed it how I have and the intent is for it to go to that playground. And, I mean, I, I understand Counselor Copeland's desire to see it all go, but if it comes a time where Habitat is looking to subdivide again, nothing prevents the City of Saco from again donating. So if, if that raised to that level of a concern, of a disadvantage where they couldn't build because they didn't have those funds for it, I certainly would, would, you know, support that donation from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, roll call, vote on the amendment. And do we need me to read the amendment one more time? For all those joining us at home, just the amendment again is to add conditions to the Habitat for Humanity parcel that new single-family homes will have residential sprinkler systems in. And the sale of the proceed from, to the abutter of land will be broken up with 3,000 going to Habitat for Humanity and the remainder going to Saco Parks and Rec for, for the playground. All right, roll call, vote on the, on the amendment?
That's, that's Booth Bay Park. So we're specific about the name of it.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. So. Counselor Archer?
Nay.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
No.
Counselor McFail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion fails 3-4. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Please read it again.
I move to approve the final reading for the following order in substantially the same form as presented. Be it ordered, the city administrator is hereby authorized to execute sale of approximately 10,000 square feet of land for assessed land valuation with buyer covering all associated fees and to execute all necessary documents to donate specified portion of land of to Marguerite Road to Habitat for Humanity. That is the motion. Counselor Johnston?
Let's see if I can amend this again. Since the motion doesn't specify where this money or these proceeds are going to go and per Chapter 81, that's up to council, I would, I would move that the entirety of the proceeds go to Habitat for Humanity then. By the way, I heard that. You got, you might want to mute your mic there, counselors.
So the amendment, Counselor Johnston, is to all the, the proceeds of the entire sale go to Habitat for Humanity?
That is the motion.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Copeland. Any discussion?
I mean, what I would say.
Counselor Johnston, I'm sorry, Counselor Archer had his hand up. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I get that this is money going to, to an organization and it, it's, I mean, we gave them the land, so again, I'm, I'm on board for this. I'm still on board for the original. Been on board for a while. Once we got the assessed value and some of the details worked out, I, I've been on board since. I just don't think that the 6,000 or whatever the assessed value is, what we get is not a good use of putting this money forward and, and for donation to come at the very last minute like this. Again, it's just against my gut right now. So I'm going to be voting no that we just, it goes into the general fund like all general sales of property.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Johnston?
I mean, again, I, I already expressed that I wasn't comfortable with this when this new addition got added. So the, the, the problem here is that we're ultimately giving away money. It's how I foresee, or see this. You have property, it has a value. We're giving it away, which is fine. It's our, you know, within our purview. So I, I equally don't feel okay charging the abutter for money or for this chunk of land if that's how we're going to be, because ultimately, we're losing out. So my intent was to, you know, okay, obviously, the abutter or previous abutters whoever owned it earlier, you know, approached onto the city's land, here's an opportunity for, you know, us to take that and, and do good with it. You know, obviously, I tried to tie it to sprinklers and I would hope that, you know, Habitat would use it for that purpose. But at the end of the day, why are we doing this at all? Let's just give both lots away.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Archer? Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Purdy, then Counselor Archer.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I'm supportive of, of, of giving the, giving the money to Habitat. Let's, I mean, we're, we're trying to do a good thing here, so let's, let's take it all the way with it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, I, I believe that we should be selling this property. One, it, it's, it's property that we own, we're not just giving away. Now, I'm talking about just the portion of where this person's property was and where there's been some confusion. This, our action today, if we decide to sell it, and it's sold, creates a timestamp for all future property owners. We can actually solve this problem for many years to come, because there'll be a date where the, the land of the sale will literally timestamp it saying the date of sometime into 2020 is that this property is now theirs, and it kind of solves this problem. So by selling it, getting a good timestamp, you have that dollar figure, which I know the courts deeds love to have, that I, I know a lot of times people buy property for a dollar to say that there was a transaction. It creates that timestamp. I think this is fair to the citizens to get some value for the property that we are selling. It's fair to the person who owns the property, who has had, again, we're not going to go into the details of, yeah, he's had some of his own property where it's not supposed to be. How that person's going to repair that, is they're going to pay for the land, and it'll become theirs, and we create a timestamp that allow us to move forward. And in the, in the interim, you also have two, possibly two new homes being built by Habitat for Humanity to help some lower-income citizens. So what I think we have here is a really good solution. And again, assessed value is a fair value. And assessed values can then actually be outside of the city, outside of, anybody can assess it again, and they can say, hey, yeah, was it a fair value or not? So it's actually putting the city kind of on notice, saying, hey, this better be a true assessed value within reason and the flexibility that an assessor has. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Archer. Counselor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We want to donate this, these two pieces to Habitat for Humanity. That's what we want to do. That's our goal. That's how we started. We came across this convoluted situation, and I think that it would be fair and equitable if this person paid. If, you know, I personally think that they should be removed, I've expressed that. But if everybody agrees that, that it should be sold, then sell it. And I don't, I don't think that the Registry of Deeds cares how much a property is sold for. I don't think that's an argument at all. And just putting it into our general fund, you know, so then, so then it's like we're making, the city's making money off of this. And I don't think that that's what our intent is. Our intent is to donate to Habitat. So I suggest that we donate the land, and we have this, you know, situation rectified so that all the people who email and call don't think that somebody's getting away with something that they can't. So I think that giving the money to Habitat solves all of this. We don't have to take the money in because we're trying to, to give it to Habitat, and it adds some justice in there, some, you know, fairness, in my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counsel Purdy?
Yeah, I don't think, I have no problem with, with, with selling the property to the Leadbergs, but the, I think that they, they were under the impression that that was their property already, and they'd been paying taxes on what they thought was up until this whole thing happened. And nobody, you know, they didn't realize that those sheds were built not on their property. They thought that was a property. Their driveway actually isn't even on their property. So I have no problem with, with, but let's, let's get it, let's take care of it, sell it to them, get it fixed. That way, the, the deed for Habitat is, is, is clean, and it's taken care of. And, and, but I do agree with Counsel Johnson, let's, let's donate the money to Habitat.
Thank you, Counselor Purdy. Any further discussion on the amendment now made that all the proceeds will go to Habitat for Humanity, made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Copeland? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment? A roll call vote? Counselor Archer?
On the amendment? No.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes four three. So now that you have the main motion, the original motion, as amended, with the proceeds going to Habitat for Humanity. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Counsel Archer?
It's just more of a technical question that I just need to know, know the answer is. I mean, we're technically spending money today. Does that need to go through, through a different process?
No.
Okay, I'll take that as the answer, but we, we're spending money, we haven't sold, we haven't even sold the pro. Again, we haven't, we're not actually spending money because we haven't sold the property, so I get that, I misspoke on that. But we are presenting funds to donate to a entity, a, that's out there without really due process with the city, or city citizens providing input. So again, that's, I'm looking at the technicality, nothing more about that.
As I understand it, in, you're not spending money, you're putting conditions on the execution of a purchase and sale or a, a gift, and therefore, you're, it's not required to have a five-two super a super majority, as with a budget amendment. It's not that, that type of process.
Okay, it's been discussed. Thank you.
City Administrator Canrath, would you, would you agree with that assessment?
I'm also from here, yes.
Counselor Johnston, and then Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would just, just add, it's not a budgetary item, so it's pretty clear in, in the charter, when a five-two or super majority is needed, and this falls under chapter eighty-one. If you look at that chapter, it's clear at the bottom of it, that city council directs where these funds go. It doesn't say anything about a super majority. So I just hope that, you know, helps satisfy your, your question.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Seeing no further discussion on the main motion as amended, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
For the main motion, yes.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
The main motion as amended passes seven zero. Thank you, counselors, for all the hard work and getting through that, and bearing with me and my writing, not as fast as people can talk, and then trying to get all those amendments correctly, correctly identified. So thank you, everybody, for that. With that, we are on to item D, the authorization and creation of a WRRD Coastal Resilience, excuse me, Resiliency Ad Hoc Committee. And that was discussed in our, one of our July meetings, that we would be looking to bring that forward for the creation of. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this ad hoc committee is to bring together members of the community, city councilors, and staff to identify a set of community goals to guide future investment and priorities for the Water Resource Recovery Department. The WRRD and Communications Department are partnering with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to convene this community stakeholder group and facilitate and support meaningful conversations between the anchor institution and community members. The committee, appointed by the mayor and approved by council, will consist of twelve to fifteen members. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the creation of an ad hoc WRRD Coastal Resiliency Committee and allow the mayor to appoint members with council's approval to the committee as necessary. I move to approve the order.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Minton. For those that were in attendance, if you remember, Director Carter came and gave us a, a presentation on this, and this is a good pilot project with the EPA, and, and moving forward for our, our resiliency in, in that area. So this is just to start the process of establishing a committee to identify areas that we need to work on as a city. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I was just looking for clarity, because I, I thought we had approved this at last meeting, August third meeting. I could have sworn we read the motion, and I think I amended the motion, and then there was a vote, but-
There were, there were two other committees formed, so I, I know you're-
I'm mixing them all up.
You, you, you may be mixing them up, but I was sure to make-
You did.
This had the correct- I figured you would be amending if we didn't.
All right, I was just curious, but okay.
Yeah, no, we did discuss this in July with a presentation from Director Carter and also Emily Roy, where we did talk about putting this on the agenda, actually, for the creation of new business at that time. So again, as we've talked about, new businesses kind of, kind of up in the form of bringing items to your attention, have some discussion over those, and then you see those again later on in, under action items. Not everything will take that route, especially if it's items that are, that the council knows are coming and knows is coming, or knows, you know, that we've been dealing with for, for quite some time. So that's why you, you, you might have seen this before in a, in a different form. With that said, any further discussion on the creation of this ad hoc committee? Seeing no further discussion, no counselor seeking recognition. Roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. With that, we are on to item E. Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of this commission is to bring together members of the community, city councilors, and staff to improve the aesthetic quality of the city's public spaces. The commission will encourage and support art in our community while strengthening economic development and improving quality of life. The commission will act as an advisory board to the city council and city staff to provide expertise on visual arts to enrich the cultural life of the community. The committee, appointed by the mayor and approved by council, will consist of nine members. Be it ordered that the city council authorize the creation of an arts commission and allow the mayor to appoint members with council approval to the commission as necessary. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Copeland. Counselor Johnston?
I mean, I just looked at the minutes from last meeting, and, and we've approved this art commission.
I'm looking, I'm looking back at the eight-three packet, and I, I do think that we-
With both. I mean, I, I guess there's no harm in approving it twice. It's just, I'm just, you know, it, it seems like we approved both the, the previous one and this art commission last August third.
I think we brought it back to address the areas that you identified that were amendments that needed to be fixed, if that, if I remember correctly. But again, there's, there's no harm in approving this and moving forward.
Mr. Mayor?
City Administrator Canrath?
Yeah, I just want to second that. I think I'm trying to remember back to our discussion of the agenda. I think the reason it's on here again is because there was an issue with the motion for these two committees the last time, where it was mayor appoints and approves themselves. So we added approved by council into the motion, so that reads correct. So I think that's why these are back here now. And also, I don't think there's any harm in just taking another action and, in approving.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, I don't think there's any harm. It's just, I did make a motion to amend, and it was approved, and then the motion passed with seven yeses on the main motion as amended. So we've technically already approved these, but again, it's no harm in doing it twice, I guess. I mean, it's just a formality at this point, I guess.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing no further discussion. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. With that, we are to item F, which was the Bedford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit lease approval that was taken out of consent agenda and moved into action items. So we have- Let me get to the right packet here.
I'm, I'm, I'm the resource on that, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Minton?
Page three in the packet.
The SOOB Transit would like to continue using the office space at the transportation center attached as the lease. Be it ordered, the city council authorize the city administrator to enter into a lease agreement with Bedford-Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit for the use of the office space at the Transit Transportation Center. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Minton, second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious if the city solicitor has looked at this latest version?
City Administrator Canrath?
Yes, the city solicitor put together this, this lease after consultation with all the parties, yes.
But has he looked at these amendments?
The lease in the packet is the one the city solicitor did, as far as-
The one that he looked at? I, I would like on point number seven, the bottom sentence, the last sentence there says, "The tenant shall be responsible for the supplies, toilet paper, cleaning materials, light bulbs, et cetera, required by the leased space." I don't think the leased space can require things and say what they require. I, I don't really know what that's saying. Required for the leased space? Is that what they're trying to say? I just, the whole thing was just-
I think for this reason, they are, they are supplying their own supplies in that list. This is already in their current lease, the same language.
All right, well, I, I would move that we make it required for the leased space. And I had a bunch of scribners errors and things that I sent in, and I requested they be added. Because specifically number twenty-five talks about a no smoking policy. And they talk about that they are prohibited from smoking in any part of the premises, but we have a city ordinance that no city-owned property, you can't smoke on city-owned property at all, anywhere on it. So that includes the whole parking lot and everywhere around it. So I wanted that to be added to say per city ordinance.
So Counselor Copeland, why don't we take these amendments one at a time here with the first amendment- With the first amendment being on page four, last sentence, or section seven on page four, last sentence, delete by and add for leased space. Is that correct?
That is correct. Do you want me to go through all of these little ones or...
No, let's take them one at a time.
Well, but that, these are Scrivner errors, I think. I don't think that they're changing any, you know. In some parts, it refers to leased premises, some parts it refers to leased space. That's...
Why don't we take the material changes?
Right, that's what I'm trying to say.
One at a time, and then the Scrivners notes, you can make one motion to identify all the Scrivners notes and see if that gets a second and passes council. But let's take the two issues you identified first as their material changes to the lease, so...
Minor, but yeah.
So the first one is to amend that page four, section seven. You've made that motion. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilor Menthorn. Any discussion on that motion? Councilor Johnson?
Sorry, my hand's just up to speak after Councilor Copeland.
Okay.
Nothing on the motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if we can take these, these three ones, three of these fixes, and do them as one, I think it's a waste of time to go through them all. I don't think anybody will really care. Can we do that?
If Councilor Menthorn is willing to withdraw his motion and allow you to amend your motion, then we can take some of those material changes. I just want to make sure that we don't get too far into the weeds and not be able to...
That's what I'm trying to say. Let's not, but...
I will withdraw my second to Lynn's motion to amend.
Thank you. Councilor Copeland?
Alright, thank you. So let's start at number six, the renewal option. It's, the reading says that there is no right of renewal, but the parties will consult three months prior. But I would suggest that we don't say "will" and that we say what really is going to be happening, that the parties agree to consult with each other. So that, to me, is a Scrivner thing. I don't know what it is to you, so I'll just say it. And then number seven, and Bill, you don't have to make notes because this is all in the redline version that I emailed to council or to, I don't know if I meant to council, but I know I emailed it to you and Brian. Number seven, the last one, just should say required for the leased space or leased premises is actually probably better, but I don't want to get carried away. And then the other one was the smoking. And just to say per ordinance. So we're not saying that they can smoke here, there, or wherever. The ordinance says no smoking on city property, so let's just go with that. The end. And then the little Scrivners error, you know, corrections.
Councilor Copeland, just to confirm, everything you just reviewed is what you emailed earlier to me?
It is.
Okay, good. Just want to make sure I have all that in writing.
That's all, that's all it is, yep. And I had some question about, is the Saco Transportation Center actually called the Saco Bitterford Transportation Center? I was unaware. But Alan says it is, but I was unaware of that, so.
Yep.
News to me.
I think...
News to me, too.
That's been the legal description of several of the leases on that building.
Wasn't that part of the funding? Because that was built by federal funds, correct? And it had to be like a joint?
It had to be a joint.
Okay.
Time out, time out. One person talking at a time, please. Alright, so Councilor Copeland, we have your edits, and we have the areas you've identified on page four, section six and section seven, and then page nine, section 25 tying it to the smoking ordinance for the community.
I will second those in total.
There's a motion and then there's a second. A motion made by Councilor Copeland, second by Councilor Menthorn. Any discussion on those on those three for pages, two on page four and one on page nine? Councilor Purdy?
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable voting on something and I haven't been able to read as far as legal, the Washington codes.
I just sent it to you by email.
It's, okay.
Councilor Purdy, do you want to make a motion to table?
It's really, they're really simple. It'll take you two seconds to look at it. Everything is highlighted. I'm a highlighter.
There's been a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
I will second that motion.
The table made by Councilor Purdy, I heard two seconds. I think Marshall was first. And then Councilor Gunn. Motion to table. Yes and no is on the motion to table. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yeah.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Well, even though it's mine, I have to agree with procedure. They didn't have it, so I agree that it should be tabled and they should be considering what the actual changes are.
Councilor Menthorn?
No.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
Oh, yes.
Motion to table passes six-one. We will see this again on September 14th at our next city council meeting, September 14th.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Johnson?
We never got to what I had wanted to speak on, so if it's alright with you, I just request when this comes back to us that, well, the city administrator probably could confirm one of these right now, but has this lease been reviewed by the facilities director? Would be one question.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And then the other thing I'm looking for, I believe it was about a year ago when we first approved this, and I stated at that time that when we, when the citizens and the city built the transportation center, the intent was for it to bring in some revenue to help offset the cost. And it previously was around 20,000 or more. It's now much less. And I was just curious or would appreciate a detailed budget for operations and maintenance for the building. Because as I understand it, the cost of operating the building has significantly increased. So it's just something I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Gunn, your hand is up. It has been for a little bit, but if it's on, okay. With that, we are past item F. We are on to new business, item 10, and we have three items for consideration. And the first item is a local option sales tax support letter to the governor. So the state of Maine legislature is looking at a a local sales tax option. And some of the communities are sending letters to support to make sure that the leadership of both the House, the Senate, and the governor know that there are communities that support a local option sales tax. The LD tied to this is LD 1254, and it's it's a local option sales tax to help offset with opioid issues that are related. Let me just read the... "An act to authorize a local option sales tax on meals and lodging and provide funding to treat opioid use disorder sponsored by Representative Michael Sylvester. It was the last House and Senate action on 3/17/2020. It was carried over to any special session with the legislature looking at coming back in a special session perhaps at some point here in the next couple of months. The idea is to get this before the leadership, if there's council support to do so." Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. So you're saying that this is kind of being requested by the legislature, I guess. I mean, this is the first, I think in the past, council may have discussed local option sales tax and at different levels, but this is the first I've really been faced with this. So I'm just, it's new to me and I'm not really sure how I feel about it. I obviously can read what's before us, but it kind of lacks the details as to what exactly the local option sales tax would be on. I understand, you know, that municipalities' resources are limited, but at the same time, a tax is a tax and it's going to impact our local residents. So I guess I'm looking for more information. And then additionally, when the whole marijuana recreational use went, started, there was a local option tax, and to my knowledge, that's been removed. And I'm curious why that isn't included in this because to me, it's the local level that feels those impacts of the sales and what comes with that. So I guess that's something I would like as part of that local option sales tax.
Councilor Johnson, I can appreciate that. I just know that in dealing with the mayor's coalition, many communities are putting forth letters of support to give the governor guidance on approving, if the Senate and the House approve a local option sales tax, that the governor will sign it, as she has vetoed many, many other bills, including the one you're talking about with the local option sales tax on recreational marijuana. I don't even know if that got to her before it was, before it was nixed. But the idea here is to just open up the lines of communication, let them know that we're amenable. It would still have to go to referendum within the community to pass anything or to opt in. As the LD specifies, you have to opt in, just like anything else. And that's done through a referendum process. And you can also opt out through a referendum process as well. And that is LD 1254. You can look that up. And again, there's no, there's no... We're not looking for any kind of action tonight. It's just bringing it before, before the council for consideration. And we will see it again as we start to get forward. We want to get this before the legislature, before they reconvene, if they do reconvene, so. With that, I have asked, or I've been asked to hold a recess by a couple of counselors, so at this time, I'm going to authorize a recess of five minutes or 10 minutes, rather. So let's be back at 8:58. 8:58.
They would have to submit additional taxes. So it's more of a. A burden there too. So, um. With these three things, the fact that it would cost our citizens more, it would cost our businesses more. And it would be more administrative, uh, stuff. I would vote against it and I don't think it's worth it. But we don't have any economic numbers to see what the impact would be. And I think sending this letter is premature.
Counselor Copeland, there's no econo- economic numbers to forecast. Uh, we don't have a local option sales tax. Uh, to speak of. Uh, that is the design of this is to, uh. Pass a local option sales tax and then offer a referendum for each individual community to opt in. As they see fit. Uh, it, that's not saying that every community is going to opt in. It's not saying that every community isn't going to opt in. Uh, but as a service center for multiple communities, Saco has a, a lot of tourist action coming in. And the opioid epidemic across the United States i- is real. And we're feeling the impacts of those dollars. Uh, and our, our, our resources. Are being utilized, uh, to deal with those issues. So. Again, it's, it's simply saying. Uh, giving the guidance to the. Uh, state senate, uh, and state representatives and governor that. You know. Folks are in support of these options and then allowing communities to opt in or opt out. Uh, much like local control, giving local control to the communities.
I hear that. Um. But I mean, don't we have an active lawsuit with some pharmaceutical thing that is going nowhere? I mean. I don't know. I just think that our citizenry and our businesses. Would not have benefit as, you know. Uh, uh, I don't buy it. Sorry.
Sending this letter doesn't automatically mean it's going to happen. Sending the letter is in support of the bill and then you would have to do a referendum process locally. Uh, in your community to have them opt in. This is just saying, hey, we support the legislature pushing it. But again, it, it's not an, it's not a. Issue that has to happen now. It's not right away. There's still time. Uh, it was just bringing it forward for a discussion with the council. Counselor Gunn and then Counselor Johnson. Counselor Gunn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just say briefly, I. Fully appreciate, um, where Counselor Copeland's coming from and. Needless to say, if this ever came to a local referendum, there would be a serious debate on it and merits of. Local tax versus just what the state imposes and. At the same time, you know, what's considered fair. I mean. Service use tax or just a general tax on everybody. Political parties have seemed to have switched back and forth numerous times over the last couple of years. So. Needless to say, it doesn't matter where you stand on this though. It's. Everybody has a different opinion and it kind of, uh, varies though. So I would be. In favor of signing the letter for the simple reason of pushing the governor to. At least consider signing this, uh, just to give us the option though, because we can have the debate on it like anything else. I mean. Uh, at this point, the governor hasn't even. Given us the chance to, um. Debate it by just vetoing any of these bills though. So I would push the, uh. I would support the letter simply in principle and I'm, I'm saying that I not even having made up my mind whether I would, uh. Agree to a local sales tax myself though, but for small D democracy though, you bring it down to local level and. If we have local control and self, uh, self-government as a incorporated city, I think it's a right we should have. So. I pass the letter just on the principle. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. Counselor Johnson, then Counselor Minter. Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. Um, I, again, I. Counselor Copeland just sent this to me during our little breaks. It was the first time I'm having. An opportunity to digest it, but I wholly and fully agree with her at this point. I mean, I've. You know, had mixed feelings about this through the years as it's been proposed. Um, I mean, obviously my, my own family would be impacted by this. I think it puts us at a competitive disadvantage. If surrounding communities aren't doing it. But specifically with this, when I look at it, my, my problem is that we're tying a local option. To the treatment of opioid use disorder. I'd rather just have the conversation on the option. The sales tax option and the municipalities figure out how to spend that money versus tie it specifically to an opioid use. Um, so again, with the short amount of time I've had to digest it, I wouldn't really be in favor of sending this letter.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Minter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I think we should send the letter. It starts the discussion. If, if there's pressure on Augusta to discuss it. At least it gets the topic out there and on the table for, for those folks to have a discussion in both houses. And to come up with something that might be a compromise to this, which may. In. Strings of. Ways and leaving it more open-ended to the communities and all that. But if we don't push for it to start. To initiate that discussion, then it's never an option that we might have. And one we might need in the future. So I think that. You know, there's, there's no harm in doing this. It's simply asking them to have the discussion. With respect to the current bill. And I think there's more to be gained by them having the discussion. And going nowhere with it than not having the discussion to begin with.
Thank you, Counselor Minter. Uh, just so the council is aware. Uh, there was a legislative document LD eleven ten. Uh, and that was in the, that was in the two thousand nineteen session or the first session of the main legislature. And that was an act to establish a local option sales tax. Uh, and that, uh, that died. In the senate. Uh, so that, that bill, it does not have an option. Whereas this other bill twelve fifty-four, uh, is still an option. Uh, and so again, uh, there's no, there's no, uh. There's no action tonight. It's just bringing it forward to get it on to your attention. Uh, providing the legislative documents so you can review further. Uh, and as we. Look, we might be bringing this forward as the legislature gets close to. Uh, going back into session, but, uh, we wanted to be, uh. To provide this to you for some. To look into the future and, and see how you feel about it. Any further discussion? If not, we're going to move on to item B, which is the June budget review. Andrew, can you promote Finance Director Solis, please?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Greetings and welcome. Finance Director Solis, we can hear you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much. Uh, so there was a narrative of the. Uh, June budget review as well as supporting. Documentation included in the packet that was sent to you. Uh, so I'm going to kind of review that summary now. Have any questions? Um, feel free to stop me or we can address those questions, um, at the end. Overall, year to date, the city has a net use of fund balance of one point five million. Uh, this is largely due to the. Six million in assigned fund balance. And those were funds that had been reserved in the general fund assigned fund mounts for capital expenditures. Um, those funds were transferred from the general. To the new capital projects fund. For the updated capital projects policy that was approved by council in the spring of twenty nineteen. Expenses overall came in a hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Above budget while revenues came in a hundred and fifteen thousand, thirty dollars above budget. Um, expenses, uh, council approved the use of unassigned fund balance through budget amendments. In FY twenty twenty totaling one million, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. So, um, overall, this should be considered an extremely favorable result. Uh, the city is forecasted to end the year with undesignated fund balance. Of eight million, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and one. Or fifteen point nine seven percent of the FY twenty twenty adopted budget. This is very close to the maximum unassigned fund balance as approved by council of sixteen point six seven percent. Uh, digging into the departmental budgets. The assessor, uh, on target, uh, there's a small amount, about four hundred and twenty-five or four hundred and seventy-eight dollars over. Um, this came out of the contracted services line, uh, which was not properly budgeted for the year. Uh, this item has been corrected for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Capital projects on target. Uh, the administration budget on target, uh, two thousand dollars has been encumbered to cover the summer interim through August. This will be offset by a grant from the state of Maine and we should be receiving that grant in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, city clerk was two percent over budget. Uh, the general assistance portion of the budget is tracking eighty-five hundred dollars ahead of budget. Um, general assistance is reimbursed by the state at two-thirds. So this overage will be largely compensated for by the state. Um, we may be able to book a portion of this reimbursement to fiscal year twenty twenty, depending on timing of the receipt of funds. Uh, under governmental accounting standards and modified accrual accounting, we do have, we are able to book. Revenues receivable that is received within sixty days of the close of the fiscal year. Uh, code enforcement, uh, one percent under budget due to COVID nineteen. The training schedule was curtailed, leading to savings on this line. Contingency is the most significant item that was over budget and this actually is driving. Basically the entire a hundred and seven thousand or so that we were over budget. Um, an analysis of accounts receivable revealed that the city has been holding surplus receivables on its balance sheet totaling about a hundred and nine thousand dollars. This surplus balance dates as far back as twenty sixteen, per my research on the matter, possibly farther. Um, an entry has been booked to write down this balance and the offsetting debit was booked to contingency. As this is a material adjustment, I just wanted to address some likely questions that could come out of this. Uh, did the city spend a hundred and nine thousand out of contingency? No, we did not lay any out any actual cash. Our checking account has not been affected. Rather, this is an adjustment down of an asset called accounts receivable on our balance sheet. Why were accounts receivables so high? Great question. Uh, Muniz provides a number of different reports on accounts receivable. In reviewing the reporting that was used to reconcile this account in the past, I identified that application of credit. Is not counted towards the receivables balance. As a result, the accounts receivable account was consistently being inflated by manual adjustments. I have reached out to Muniz to ascertain why it is that. You can pull three different accounts receivables and have three different account receivable amounts reported. Um, and I am getting some feedback, uh, but I can confirm that. The accounts receivable account that we are using now is the correct one because I have tied out. Uh, the activity for the last couple of fiscal years to this report exactly and it ties out. Did the city lose money? No. Again, no cash outlay related to this adjustment. Uh, really what was going on is this higher accounts receivable balance made our unassigned fund balance look higher than it was. So with this adjustment, our unassigned fund balance is more accurate. Again, we are looking to close the year pretty close to the sixteen point six seven percent target. On unassigned fund balance versus due fiscal year twenty twenty budget. So this adjustment isn't significantly impacting our, uh, work toward that goal. Finally, uh, could this happen again? And the simple answer is no. Um. I have detailed the proper way to reconcile accounts receivable. In our monthly reconciliation procedure manual, including screenshots and identifying the correct reports to use in our financial software. This document will act as a guide to ensure accounts receivable, receivable balances tied to our receivables reporting correctly in the future. Uh, furthermore, I have created a secondary count for manual end of year receivable adjustments, uh, to meet modified accrual standards. Uh, this ensures that billing receivables will always tie to the general ledger accounts receivable balance. Finally, general billing accounts receivable reconciliation has been added to our internal control narratives. With your review with the auditors on an annual basis and it has been scheduled to be completed thoroughly. Um, as this is a significant item, were there any additional council questions on this specific adjustment? I'm not seeing anything. I'll continue. Council, council came in 30% under budget due to COVID-19. Certain amounts appropriated for citizen recognition, miscellaneous expense and training were not expended. Penney Tax right on target. Federal assistance includes $15,775 not budgeted. We are using this account to track qualified FEMA expenses related to the COVID-19 emergency and pandemic. Reimbursement is expected in fiscal year 2021. The Finance Department came in on target. Fire and ambulance came in 1% over budget. A number of encumbrances have not been properly cleared. Finance Department is struggling with staffing levels. We are working actively to correct those items. Additionally, holiday pay was not properly budgeted in fiscal year 2020. We discussed this item in the past. That was corrected for fiscal year 2021. Benefits came in 2% over budget. When budgeting benefits for fiscal year 2020, retirement contributions on overtime pay were not forecasted into our budgeted amount from clear contributions to main state pension and to FICA. This was corrected in the fiscal year 2021 budget. The Human Resources Department has come in on target. Information Technology came in 1% under budget. Significant funds have been encumbered. These are to purchase additional equipment and software licenses to support remote work made necessary by the COVID-19 pandemic. Insurance came in 26% under budget. Significant finance worked with our partners, Pacwin and Carroll, to properly allocate insurance premiums between the city, school, Kent Ellis Fund, and Water Resources Recovery Department. The city had been paying an inflated portion of the insurance premiums, leading to significant cost of runs in the last couple of years. This was also corrected for the fiscal year 2021 budget. Parks and Recreation came in 3% under budget. Many budget lines relating to programming costs unfortunately were not fully utilized after programming was shut down due to COVID-19. These savings are offset by lots of recreation fees on the revenue side. Planning and Economic Development came in on target. Significant funds encumbered here as well for several significant projects in fiscal year 2021, most notably the comprehensive plan update, completion of the zoning ordinance revision, and a review of traffic impact and other fees. The Police Department came in 4% under budget. There were several positions open throughout the year. Some of those savings have been reutilized to meet departmental needs elsewhere with approval from the administrator and council. However, the department will still net significantly under budget. Public Works came in 3% under budget. Work in the spring was slowed by reduced staffing levels. Minimize the risk of COVID school budget right on target. The Solicitor came in 17% over budget. Planning and Economic Development, with many of these solicitor agency and to qualify TIF districts. However, this budget still came in high, which the issue of our partners Murphy and some of other lawyer law firms this year. Support target. Transfers were 16% over. Valuations came in higher than anticipated when the budget was approved. This isn't really an over budget because, of course, the transfer amounts are set by the assessor, not appropriated by council. And now I'm going to move over to the revenue side.
Finance Director Salas, there is a question from Councilor Minton.
Yes.
Goodness, are we at a point with our solicitor expenses overall where we should maybe be looking at having an in-house solicitor? Because of the breadth and depth of everything we're putting out in all the various areas, having someone in-house that could maybe do a lot of this stuff internally? And then where it needs to go out for review from TIF council or whatever, the bulk of the heavy lifting's already been done inside at a lower cost than paying an outside firm to do that?
It's an interesting question. I would defer to the city administrator on that one.
I wanted to bring it up because it seems like, I know we're over budget this year, but to me, I would think, and maybe Councilor Copeland could chime in since she works for a law firm, that some of this could probably be done in-house for a lesser cost than what we're paying outside contractors. Thank you.
Well, if I were to weigh in, I would say that
Councilor Copeland, please. Councilor Johnston had his hand up first. Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. I would just say that we've explored this in the past, probably four, maybe five years ago. Maybe we could re-explore it, but at that time, it didn't appear as though it would be more cost-effective to have it in-house. And it would be hard to find an attorney, you know, that has the experience that would probably want to work for those wages we're thinking of. That's what I recall, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Councilor Copeland?
I would just say that we have a lot of specialized needs, and we have a city solicitor with general knowledge of our community. And I've asked in the past to see the legal bills, to see what it is that we're doing, and I've never gotten them. So it's hard to say. I mean, if it's a lot of just general stuff, looking at contracts and things like that, but when you get into TIFs, when you get into employment, when you, you know, get into, you know, labor negotiations, that's all specialized anyway. So that's still going to happen. I don't know. I don't know about that one.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Councilor Johnston?
I think I just left the hand up.
Sorry. Any further discussion? If not, Finance Director Salas, please continue.
All righty, thank you. So moving on to the revenue side, building rentals came in 16% over forecast. Building rental fees are now actually being billed by the Finance Department, and so we're booking that revenue as we bill it. The city clerk fees, 3% under forecast. So with city hall close to the public, certain city clerk services were not available. So, you know, it's not surprising the revenues came in a little bit soft. Not all of those clerk fees are necessarily items that people have to hit a deadline like you would with vehicle registration. Code enforcement fees were actually 34% over forecast. So building and construction activity remained very strong through the spring, even through quarantine. Code enforcement benefits from a long development timeline for a new development, as well as a flurry of health improvement projects during quarantine. Communication cable fees are currently 20% under forecast. Typically, we do book the fourth quarter, and typically, we do receive that payment within 60 days of the close of fiscal year. So I am anticipating that we'll see the balance of these funds before I close the books. Federal assistance, there was 1346. It's booked as a negative number. Those are just a couple more expenses, FEMA side expenses. They were booked to revenue and error. That's why it's showing as a negative revenue. We're looking, we're planning to reclass those. Finance fees and penalties came in 7% under forecast. Late payment interest penalties and liens were delayed during quarantine. So again, not surprising that this item came in a little bit soft. Fire and ambulance transfer revenues, 42% under forecast. We've had some issues with delays in payments for Medicare, along with reduced demand for ambulance services during the quarantine period. And so we had to, we had to cut off transfers in the ambulance fund because those revenues needed to be replenished within that fund. Interest earnings came in 39% over forecast. We had another amazing year with interest earnings. The repo market was very strong. Our cash position was higher than anticipated just due to the timing of expenditures, most of them related to the new public works facility that resulted in surplus interest earnings of $115,575. Since then, unfortunately, interest rates have fallen precipitously. They went from over 2% in the first part of fiscal year 2020 to less than 0.2% as of June. So we may need to consider some alternatives for earning interest revenues in fiscal year 2021. It's not something that the city would, of course, rush into, and there are a lot of restrictions from the state of Maine in terms of what our options even are for earning money on our assigned and unassigned fund balances. But if we want to continue to have strong interest earnings, I think we're going to have to look to be a little bit more creative. Parks and Recreation fees, 23% under forecast. Again, recreational programming was unfortunately largely canceled in the spring due to COVID-19. There has been a small summer camp and some recreational activities in the summer, but very limited. And we collect most of our fees for summer recreation in the spring, and so our fees came in pretty low. Planning and Economic Development fees, on the other hand, 69% over forecast. So similar to code enforcement, strong development interest in Saco, tight cost recovery procedure established between Finance and Planning and Economic Development have been strong revenue performance, even through the spring when things were, things slowed down a bit. The Police Department fees and revenues, 58% under forecast. This loss in revenue was offset by savings on the expense side in the Police Department. The most significant piece of this is actually reduced revenue related to the Open MBA position, which is typically funded by the state of Maine when it is filled. Public Works revenues, this is mostly vehicle excise, is 3% over forecast. This was maybe a bit of a surprising result, given that City Hall is close to the public. The city does have the ability to book excise fees that were due in the spring when City Hall was closed to fiscal year 2020. So we'll be doing that exercise in the next couple of weeks. So this performance will actually be even stronger. However, the Finance Department does have a practice of very conservative budgeting revenues, where we typically take the last three years' average. And so that's benefiting the city in this case because even though excise revenues were soft, we still came in over budget. Real and personal property taxes were 3% over budget. There was a strong overlay in fiscal year 2020. Personal real estate tax revenues were due before quarantine began. So those two things combined together have meant that we were able to collect our full amount. Sales city assets, it's 90% under forecast. I mean, we budget basically a placeholder $10,000 amount here. In most cases where city assets were sold, departments would book them as a credit in their expense line so that they can purchase replacement vehicles and equipment. And then unallocated is a similar case where we just book a placeholder $10,000 for any found revenues that come in throughout the year. So it is under forecast, but that's not a significant thing. Are there any questions on what I presented?
Finance Director Salas, what was the overlay, just out of curiosity?
I do not have that number handy, but I can provide it, I can provide it to councils to follow up.
Thank you. Any further questions for Finance Director Salas? Finance Director Salas, thank you for joining us. Great presentation, as always.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Moving on to item C, the unaccepted portion of Berry Road follow-up. City Administrator Keanrath, will we be hearing from yourself, Planner Prescott, or Code Enforcement Director Lambert on this?
We do have city planner, a former city planner, Emily Cole Prescott, I believe, available. I think Pat Fox is also available for questions, our Public Works Director. I know Dick Lambert, our Code Enforcement Director, did have another meeting tonight. I know he was tuning in, but I'm not sure if that other meeting is over or not yet. So we should have a few people available to answer any questions or give guidance.
Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor and council, I've got to head off to work. I did just want to say that, well, before I leave, I just, as part of the council discussion, which I'm just myth, I just wanted to thank Emily Cole Prescott for her time as the city planner. I mean, I thought she did a phenomenal job, so I just wanted to do that, put that out publicly. And I wish I could save for this discussion. I'm going to listen on my phone, but I got to head out. So have a good night.
Have a good evening, Councilor Johnston. With that, any questions? Update again tonight. It's just an update from Councilor Minton?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Pat, I had a question. I was reading the planning board packet this week with regard, and I came across the section about private roads. And in there, they reference a 40-foot width in the new shore document. Says the 50-foot or talk and is the public versus city? What's the requirement?
Well, Councilor Minton, I'm not as familiar with every detail of the private road ordinance as I am the public road, obviously. But I think when you look at what fits within the 50-foot right-of-way of a public road, you're trying to accommodate all of the major utility lines, including, you know, recent gas expansion or any future utility that could end up underground. You have sidewalks. You tend to have more fire hydrants. Public roads tend to be higher speed than private roads, so you're trying to accommodate pedestrian separation. So you'll create esplanade. So you just tend to use up the 50-foot width a lot quicker with a public road. So I anticipate, I expect that that's where that came from originally. So any public street, we typically look for it to be 50 feet. That way, everything is a standard width as you work down through, and you don't have as many encroachments on the public way of fences, trees, other visual obstructions and whatnot, and you have room for future expansion.
Thank you so much.
Any further questions? Thank you, Director Fox, Code Enforcement Officer Lambert, and Emily Cole Prescott for joining us this evening. I don't think there's any further questions at this time. So we will move on to the next agenda item, which is administrative update, item 11. City Administrator Keanrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to first recap on the Keep Maine Healthy Program Award, as I reported last time, we were awarded by round one, $116,000, $116,735. We have now submitted invoices for reimbursement of expenses already made covering June 8th through July 31st in the amount of $57,834. And this is on a rolling monthly basis that invoices are submitted. There is a round two of funding, as I'm sure you're aware. The one piece with this, though, that this round is given to communities or municipalities that did not receive any funding in the first round. So because we did, I think our award is going to be quite a bit less around two. And so far, at least preliminarily, we've received about $6,790 so far for round two. I'll have more updates on this going forward. Signs. As you know, we've ordered and placed signs of the beach promoting social Signs. As you know, we've ordered and placed signs of the beach, beach promoting social distancing and mask-wearing along walkways. They are now in place. We will continue to add more as needed and as appropriate. We've also ordered signs stating dogs are not allowed on playing fields and placed them at a whole number of fields listed here in my report. These signs, the placement is now underway. There are some locations that will require Dixie to place the signpost. So those are underway. As we talked about at a future meeting, we will discuss more the dogs under voice command and what exactly is laid out in our ordinance. A reminder on elections, nomination papers are now available for the school board seats awards two, four, and six, which will be on the November third general election ballot. Candidates are required to obtain thirty-five signatures of registered voters in their respective awards. Nomination papers will be due back to the City Corks Office no later than Friday, February, I'm sorry, September fourth, twenty twenty, to make the November ballot. We do have an RFP out for the Saco Island multimodal bridge concept plan. The city of Saco is seeking proposals from qualified firms to create a feasibility and concept plan for a multimodal bridge across the Saco River and Scenic Falls, parallel to the railroad tracks between Saco and Biddeford. This bridge will be an extension of the Saco-Biddeford Riverwalk Trail, connecting the Saco Transportation Center to the planned Pearl Street Riverfront District in Biddeford. And it will accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists and possibly support transit shuttle service between Saco and Biddeford. Completing this bridge is a major step in creating a transit-oriented development hub in Saco and Biddeford as part of regional efforts supported by PACS, BSOOB Transit, and NEPR, as well as private development partners. The proposed bridge is intended to be an iconic destination for the region, supporting transportation and recreation in the robust downtowns and mill districts in Saco and Biddeford. All proposals should be received by eleven AM on Tuesday, September first. Any questions, please direct them to Jessa Burna, who is our Economic Development Specialist, by emailing her at jburna@socromaine.org. Lastly, an update on our annual report. Finishing touches are being placed on this document, and we will have it ready for council presentation at our next meeting. That's all I have. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any questions for City Administrator? Counselor Copeland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Canrath, I I can't get where this bridge is going to be. Can you help me understand what that is?
You know, I cannot really, but if you'd like, we can have an update maybe with Jessa at a future meeting to explain in more detail. I don't have the exact coordinates or anything, but this is, these are, this was a funding grant discussed and planned with a variety of partners. So we can, happy to get you more information. Exact.
All right, well, and I'm just curious. I mean, we've been looking at a bridge from Saco Island over by the the Riverwalk and developing all that. And this seems I, I'm on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I'm on the Conservation Commission. First I'm hearing of this one.
Happy to stick with planning and development. More information or perhaps even have a meeting or bring them to a future council meeting for
Okay, because I'm feeling blindsided. This hasn't been vetted through any of our, it hasn't been an idea that's been pushed from any of our committees. I don't know. We've had other ideas. We had the idea about the continuing the Eastern Trail along the railroad lines over there. So we've had some other ideas and I don't know how this one got through without talking to the committees and listening to their suggestions about the other two ideas already out there.
Counselor Copeland, I think that, as the city administrator alluded to, this is in relation to the Sewell grant monies that Saco Main Street applied for and was awarded the certain amount of money for a pedestrian bridge that was originally talked about going underneath the the current bridge that would connect.
I know what you mean, the one over by, by
By run of the mill.
York Hill, yeah, right, right. But that was originally supposed to go across to the river sidewalk when that developed, Saco Island East was being developed, and it wasn't. And then Administrator Sutherland diverted it to over there. And when that didn't happen, he did something else, but I don't even know it.
I'm not doing any diverting. No diverting happening.
You, I'm talking about your predecessor.
So I think that, I think that the plan has come through Saco Main Street and through economic development. And that's why I think City Administrator Canrath is, you know, his idea to bring in economic development to talk about exactly how this came about and answer some of those pertinent questions you have at the next council meeting makes sense.
Thank you. Believe that we haven't vetted it through our committees.
Honestly, Counselor, this, I think, was already in the works before my time here, so I'm not even a hundred percent up to date on this.
It was.
My job tonight is I wanted to make sure to publicly announce the RFP. A bit of a project, but maybe we'd all, maybe we'd all benefit from having another session on this topic.
Please.
Any further questions for City Administrator Canrath? Brian, thank you very much. With that, we are up to item twelve, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment? There's been quite a lot tonight. Any further? Okay. See, no further discussion and comment. We are bypassing items thirteen and fourteen as there's no executive session on tonight. So with that brings us to item to adjourn. Discussion. Call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy? Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Minthor? Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
And counsel, the motion passes six, zero, and one with Counselor Johnston not here tonight, or not here at this moment. So six, zero will be the official roll call. With that, I want to thank everybody for your work tonight and your diligence on behalf of our community. And be well and stay safe.
Take care.